Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'll call to order the December 8, 2022 Louisville Planning Commission meeting with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner Osterman.
Here.
Chair Brownice.
Here.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Krantz.
Here.
Thank you. With that, a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. It carries. And I don't believe we have any minutes for... Oh, yes.
Actually...
We backed up on minutes. We have a lot of minutes to review.
Actually, clarification. Staff neglected to include the recent past month's minutes. So you have... You're missing Novembers, but you have the two prior that were in the previous packets. So we're going to bring Novembers to you next month.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any corrections that people need to make to the September 22 or October 13 minutes?
I believe I have to abstain from Octobers.
What's that?
I believe I have to abstain from approval from Octobers.
All right. With that, then, I entertain a motion to approve the September 22, 2022 minutes.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And no abstentions on this one. With that, then, we move to the approval of October 13, 2022 minutes.
I move approval of the October 13, 2022 minutes.
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. I carry. At this point, we open up for public items, for public comment, for items that are not on this evening's agenda. If anybody wants to speak, if you're participating by Zoom, you can use the raise hand function, star nine if you're on phone. Seeing nobody here, we'll move through that. That moves us to our first item, adoption of Resolution 13, Series 2022, recommending denial of the Redtail Ridge preliminary and final plat. I think at this point, we can open it up to final thoughts if anybody on the commission wanted to add anything to it, and then we'll just move into a motion, into a vote. So if you have any additional thoughts, anybody wanted to share? Seeing none. Commissioner Moline?
Well, I would just, I'm gonna continue to not support the motion. As I previously commented, I feel on Section 2A, I feel the applicant met the dedication requirement and that the proposal adequately protects the natural features that are present on the site, many of which have been enhanced by the human use and agricultural use of the property in the past. And then on Sections D and E, on D, I think that again, the, I find that the applicant, or excuse me, application does comply with Section 161620B. And then I agree on Item E with a staff analysis that found that the applicant, application did meet the GDP request in this regard. So just wanted to clarify why I will not be supporting the motion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I also had a few thoughts, beginning with the thought that change is hard. Probably with the exception of Old Town, perhaps, people have been opposed to nearly every commercial and residential subdivision that now comprise the Louisville that we all love. Though many of us would love to be on the design team for any given project, that is not the role of planning commission in this process. The current proposal includes 155 acres of public land and the potential for connectivity with the Admar Open Space. And that's connectivity that I think is really important, that we could lose. The campus drive extension would be built in Phase 1, providing safety that we all know is desperately needed for the Monarch, K A, and high school students and staff and faculty. I wish we were discussing, discussing conditions to include a sustainability action plan with real teeth, discussing funding mechanisms for future traffic improvements and reduced grading onsite. Instead, we're just telling that the developer that we simply want more from them, with a laundry list of ideas, many of which are unfortunately economically impossible. We currently have more vacant retail space than at any time in recent history. Unfortunately, our message of denial comes at a time when we're also hoping that developers will help us redevelop areas of the McCaslin Corridor to provide the sustainable, walkable, mixed-use areas that many wish to see there. While this project is certainly not what I wish was being proposed for this location, I do think it has a lot to offer Louisville and that further delay does not ensure a better project outcome for the town. So just where I'm at with it and why I'll be voting against the motion. Any other thoughts? No? All right. Oh, yeah? Tamara?
I would like to move to approve our resolution, but I would really, you know, I really do appreciate that you stated those conditions because eventually I think that this is, while I disagree that faster process is what we need, I think that eventually we're going to end up completing back to the conditions that you mentioned when, in my opinion, we have a compliant project.
Commissioner Krantz, I'm sorry, so sorry to interrupt. I don't think your microphone's on.
I am really sorry.
Great.
I'm hoping we come, I'm hoping that they come back with a compliant, with what I believe would be a more compliant project with the GDP, and I hope that we have those, what you just said about the sustainability plan with teeth and the other conditions, make it into our minutes and that those will end up ultimately as part of this project. So if you don't mind, I'm going to move that we approve the resolution of denial.
Yes. Resolution 13, Series 2022.
Should I continue reading it? I'm sorry.
I think that's plenty, actually.
Okay.
All right.
Ready for roll call?
Yeah, roll call, please.
Did you want a second?
We need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
No.
Commissioner Moline?
No.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. It's been a long process for all of us. All right. With that, then, we'll move into our next, our first item of new business. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a planned unit development amendment at 1411 South Arthur Avenue. The purpose of the hearing is receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we'll have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise hand function if you're participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Pooling of comments is not permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none. Do we have proper notification?
Thank you, Chair Brownice. Yes, we do. The item was properly noticed back in October and was properly continued to this date from the last planning commission hearing on November 10 to the date certain, so all required notification has been met.
Thank you. Do any planning commission members have any disclosures?
I'd like to mention something. As everyone knows, I'm a local businessman with clients throughout the city. I believe I can remain impartial and fair despite my clients' participation in proposals prevented, presented before this commission. This development is one such proposal. I have no financial interest in this project and believe I can participate in a fair and unbiased manner.
Thank you. Any additional disclosures? Seeing none?
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Elizabeth K. Marquetti, senior planner on behalf of city staff. Thank you again for the opportunity to present to you tonight. Also here this evening is Mr. Andy Johnson, applicant's representative. He'll be making a presentation following mine. He's also happy to answer any questions that you have. The item before you is Resolution Number 15, Series 2022, which recommends approval of a planned unit development at 1411 South Arthur Avenue that would allow construction of an office flex industrial building. I've prepared a slightly different style presentation for you tonight that will review the key details of the proposal through a summary of the approval criteria found in the Commercial Development Design Standards and Guidelines and in subsections A and B of 1728120 of the Louisville Municipal Code. I'll also discuss the two proposed waivers, the four previously approved waivers, and staff's analysis and recommendations for this PUD amendment. This aerial photo shows the site outlined in red. The site is approximately 5.76 acres and is zoned PCZD. Arthur Avenue bounds the site on the south, while existing commercial buildings bound the site on the southwest and east sides. The land to the north is in unincorporated Boulder County and is used for single-family detached homes. The northwest corner is adjacent to the 96th Street right-of-way. Across Arthur Avenue to the south are large-format two-story buildings used by commercial and light industrial businesses. The site was originally subdivided via the Colorado Technological Center, number one plat, in 1979. It's now subject to the 2019 Business Center at CTC Replat I, which eliminated that lot line that you see in the image there. The 2019 GDP Amendment G rezoned the land to PCZD and allowed specific commercial uses. So that's why the Commercial Development Design Standards apply at the site. This image is from Page 2 of the PUD and depicts the proposed layout of the site. Section 1 of the CDDSG and subsection A1, 6, and 11, and B1, 5, and 12 of 1728120 all deal with site planning, the appropriateness of the use, and compliance with city policy and regulations. The two-story building is located in the north and western portions of the lot, which generally slopes upward from south to north. The proposed office flex industrial use is allowed and fits well in the CTC context. The layout of the building creates a visual break at the northwest end to open up the site to views west. The second floor, glass-enclosed walkway over here, it's depicted by this light dashed line here, spans the ground-level plaza and connects the northern portion of the structure to the southern portion. The roof is flat and generally has a southern orientation so that future solar top panels could easily be accommodated. The proposed use in this location aligns with city policy and the GDP that governs the site. Here's Page 2 again, with certain features highlighted. Sections 2 and 3 of the CDDSG and subsections A2 and 7 and B7 and 8 address the safe accommodation of vehicles, bicyclists, and pedestrians. The proposed layout complies with these regulations by providing two automobile, bicycle, and two pedestrian access points to the site from Arthur Ave. The proposed walkways, shown in blue, connect to the existing sidewalk on Arthur and offer convenient pathways to and from the building while effectively separating auto and pedestrian traffic. The pathways provide easy access to the outdoor gathering and lawn game spaces in the northwest portion of the site over here. And the parking lot design accommodates two-way traffic, providing convenient access to all portions of the building. The drive aisle along the north provides separate parking and loading for the flex industrial spaces along here. It effectively keeps truck traffic separate from pedestrians and cyclists traveling through the rest of the site. The 40 bicycle parking spaces, which are highlighted in yellow, provide indoor storage for employees and outdoor racks for visitors in convenient locations near main entrances. The emergency vehicle turnaround, which is highlighted in orange at the top, doubles as an access point to the Bennetts property to the north and is in the same exact location as in the previously approved PUD. Lastly, the proposal meets the requirements regarding spaces for electric vehicle charging. These images are from Pages 5 and 7 of the PUD and show some of the proposed architecture. Section 4 of the CDDSG and Section A8 and 9 and B5 and 8 all deal with architectural design and the visual experience of the buildings relative to the site. The proposed building's footprint at 52,735 square feet is larger than the previously approved version of 38,495 square feet. However, the gross square footage of the building has decreased from 102,393 square feet down to only 84,164 square feet. The same color palette and materials are proposed, as in the previously approved version, with the use of painted metal panels, concrete, and glass in shades of grays, browns, with black accents. The structure's bulk is reduced through horizontal and vertical, vertical variations in the facade and in the roofline. The two-story structure is compatible with the other two-story structures in the vicinity. To continue the discussion of architecture, this again is from Page 2 and is meant to show the aerial view of the building and illustrate the visual access and relief offered by the design. The architecture effectively orients much of the office space and all of the outdoor gathering spaces towards the west. The expanded outdoor plaza allows views to the west from the parking lot and sidewalk along Arthur Ave. The building is set far to the north and west sides of the lot, leaving much of the site as landscaping and parking area. From the perspective of Arthur Avenue, it provides a sense of openness and distance between the buildings and the neighboring structures. Along with the previously approved waivers, all of these architectural design choices result in a compliant proposal. Now we're shifting gears to a discussion of landscaping. Section 5 of the CDDSG and subsections A4 and 10, and B2, 3, 4, 6, 9, 10, and 11 all address landscaping. This image is from Page 15 of the PUD and depicts the building footprint in blue and the various hydrozones around the site. The proposal complies with the review criteria as the high-water use, high-water use zone, pardon me, which is only the tree lawn on Arthur Ave, is taking up the least amount of land, and the low and very low water-using areas make up the largest amount of the site. The plant grouping and quantities and proposed materials effectively reduces the demand for irrigation. To continue the landscaping analysis, this is a color rendering of the entire landscape plan that's broken up between Pages 10, 11, and 12 of the PUD. The plan complies with these standards by proposing dense formal landscaping around the building while somewhat less formal landscaping is proposed around the lot perimeters. The plan calls for more trees in several areas of the site than are required to make up for the lack of trees along the northern border. The landscaping along the southern perimeter with tall shrubs and trees will effectively screen much of the parking lot. There's no known soil subsidence or floodplain in or on the site, and 134 trees and 805 shrubs are planned, where today there is mostly only natural grass. The landscape will create significant shade and reduce demand for heating and cooling. Now I'll move on to a discussion of the two new requested waivers. The first waiver requests that there not be a 30-foot-wide planting buffer along the entire length of the north lot line. This image depicts the entire easement held by the Northern Colorado Water Conservation District along the northern boundary represented in orange or peach. The building footprint is in blue, and the narrower dashed red line closer to the building is meant to indicate the building setbacks. This is an aerial photo from Google Maps and depicts the existing conditions with the north lot line of the site and the approximate length and width of the 30-foot-deep easement indicated in that thick yellow bar. Also shown are the approximate distances to the two single-family detached homes to the north. Please note that the ground continues to slope upwards towards these two homes, so that the closest home is approximately eight feet higher than the subject site. This image is a portion of Page 2 on the top and a portion of that colored landscape image I showed earlier, and depicts the two existing constraints on the subject site. The first, again, is the 30-foot-wide easement owned by Northern Colorado Water Conservation District, which runs the length of the north lot line and prohibits the planting of trees. The second is the 30-foot-wide emergency vehicle turnaround, which is in the same location as shown in the previously approved PUD. The applicant proposes that the northern portion of the site, with some of the least steep slopes on the whole lot, is actually better suited to create a long, flat area to accommodate flex industrial users without requiring significant cutting or filling of that area of the site. The 30-foot buffer area is proposed for drive aisle to meet the flex industrial loading and parking needs. The bottom image, again, is that color rendering of the landscape plan and shows that where feasible, some larger shrubs are planned at the north property line that don't interfere with views to the west. The proposed condition is nearly the same as was approved with the previous version of the PUD. Given the long distance and slope between the proposed building and the nearest two residences, and the fact that the location is best suited for a long, flat design that results in less land disturbance, staff recommends approval of the waiver. Now on to the second proposed waiver. This image is again from Page 2, and this time shows a close-up of the proposed layout of the western entry to the site, along with the four parking stalls proposed to be approximately 70 feet away from the entryway. They're depicted by that orange arrow. For an explanation of the larger context regarding this design, you'll also see drainage basin 4 to the northeast here and drainage basin 2 to the south here. This is important because there are four drainage basins that stretch across the front of the site, parallel to Arthur Ave. The drainage plan for the site was designed to take advantage of the natural slope and reduce the amount of cutting and filling that one or two large drainage basins would require. By planning multiple smaller drainage basins, excuse me, that work in concert with the proposed slopes of the parking area and drive aisles, the same goals for stormwater management are achieved with less earth disturbance. There's also approximately 281 feet between this entry and the one to the east, which supports the goals of minimizing conflict between entry points and providing for safe internal circulation for vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists. Given that only four of the 205 proposed parking spaces are affected and that the negative impact to the drainage plan should the entry be moved, staff recommends approval of this waiver, as the benefits of the larger site design outweigh any possible safety risks posed by these four parking spaces. Per Section 172080 of the Louisville Municipal Code, applicants may request of city council a parking reduction, and the applicant is requesting a change to the parking ratio from the required four spaces per 1,000 square feet to 2.9 spaces per 1,000 square feet. The applicant offers that the new normal of office environments is that many employees are now on-site only two or three days per week. Furthermore, flex industrial users typically have a smaller workforce than office users. The anticipated demand for parking is expected to be significantly reduced compared to if this was entirely an office building. The code requires 282 spaces, and 205 are proposed. Given the rationale offered by the applicant, staff is recommending approval of this request. This slide is meant as a summary of the previously approved waivers, which staff continues to support based on the original rationale, all of which is explained in the staff report. Staff has analyzed the application and its two waivers as they relate to the PUD criteria in Section 1728120 of the LMC and with the CDDSG, and thinks that the application is in compliance. The commission now has options. It may agree with staff's recommendation or reach its own conclusion. Therefore, staff officially recommends approval of Resolution 15, Series 2022, regarding a PUD amendment to allow an office flex industrial building at 1411 South Arthur Avenue. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up for questions. Commissioner questions to the, to Elizabeth? Sure. Commissioner Krantz?
When you were discussing the reduction in the number of parking spaces?
Yes.
Was that, that was not presented as a waiver request? Would that come out to be a waiver on the PUD, or was that?
No. So in Louisville, waivers cannot be granted for parking. The way that it works is that there are parking reductions that could be approved by city council. They are not discussed in terms of a waiver. Hence, it's not listed as a waiver, and we talk about it as something distinctly the purview of city council.
And I would just add that the real distinction, other than what you call it, is that it's a different set of criteria. So I think that what the commission needs to know is that zoning waivers have one set of criteria, parking reductions have a different set of criteria. So I would focus you in on those criteria.
Thanks. That helps a lot. I wasn't sure about that. But in, in the criteria for the parking reduction, there was a Part B that wasn't mentioned in the staff analysis.
Okay.
I'm wondering if we could... I wasn't sure that I understood the wording of it.
I will have to pull up the city code, or if you, if you're, or?
I think I have it.
I could research that and get back to you. Part B.
It was, um... It was, it said that regardless of a reduction in off-street parking spaces by the city council, adequate space and site design shall be provided to accommodate the standard number of spaces for the proposed use. So I wasn't sure what was meant by that part and how to evaluate whether or not an adequate number of spaces was there for the proposed use. So this is in the 1720080.
So while Elizabeth is bringing that up, I would just offer that, I mean, that's up to the discretion of the planning commission. It could be any number of justifications. I mean, I think the applicant described the intended use. You know, sometimes we see shared parking agreements. You know, sometimes we see shared parking agreements, but not always. Sometimes an applicant will describe the types of uses, you know, intended for the building, which may have less parking demand for various reasons. And I think it's up to the commission and City Council to kind of accept the explanation. It's a, you know, there's a lot of discretion with the commission.
Okay. I wasn't sure because when I, when I read the word "proposed use", I wasn't sure if I was going to read strictly the proposed use that is listed in the GDP or the proposed use as it was described in the applicant.
As it's described in the application, right. It's what the, the potential future use that's being discussed tonight.
Thank you.
And to be clear, there is a zoning document that allows a series of uses for this property. And so it could be any of those uses over time, and it may fluctuate over the years depending on who the user or users of the building may be. So something to keep in mind.
Thank you. Additional questions? Yes. Commissioner Osterman.
I think just a follow-up question related to being able to evaluate the parking spaces. I might have missed it, but so my understanding is that part of the use will be office space, the other part will be flex industrial. Do we have the exact breakdown of the square footage for each type of use?
I believe that is on the cover page of the PUD, yes. That's part of the site data table, which of course I do not have.
We can have the applicant.
Can.
If she doesn't have it.
The calculation that was used.
It exists. I'm sure the applicant can help you. Yes.
Additional questions? Commissioner Howe.
There was an original square footage proposal, and then we changed it to the 84,164 square feet. How much of this change relates to rentable tenant office or this flex industrial or office? And how much of that is the underground parking lot?
Ah, so when calculating, okay, the total square footage of a development, we talk in terms of habitable square feet. So parking area would not be counted unless you're, I think unless we have a one-off where you've got a mixed-use building and parking is built into the structure perhaps, which we don't have here. We don't have that scenario. So the square footage is talked about, the area with inside the habitable walls.
I think that originally the parking structure was beneath.
Correct. The parking, there was underground parking. So the, now it is all surface. And the northern, if I go to the slideshow, this will make it bigger. The, this portion of the structure is now entirely flex industrial, where the previous version, all if not most of that, had been office space. It was a slightly different looking, obviously the architecture has changed slightly. But again, like there was an east-west oriented wing of the building. It had been office.
And that's the change that resulted in the change of the square footage?
I think I'll probably let the designer kind of go into more detail about how, where the biggest changes occurred.
That would be my question.
Sure, 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 sure.
We can let the designer speculate on that.
Question regarding, so the neighboring properties. There was particular concern about kind of a visual buffer and trees.
Right.
Understanding that the neighbor is far away, but it's still part of their view shed. Why would we want to not provide that buffer?
I think there are arguments that could be made about the efficacy of a buffer in that location, given the distance between this structure and the nearest other structures. And if we're talking about views, that's looking to the south. If, if the views that, that users and nearby residents are most invested in is the views to the west, the neighbors to the north are not impeded at all in their views to the west. Furthermore, this building is going to be lower than either of those two existing single-family homes. And again, given that they are above them looking down on the building, one could argue that only the maturest Colorado Blue Spruces would effectively screen that building. At most, it's going to be approximately 40 feet tall. And so trees that might be able to be planted there, and they're not like... To be clear, that conservation easement, that water district easement prohibits the planting of trees. The city would be remiss to approve anyone to go forward and do such thing. So the question is whether or not any of that area could be used for any other kind of landscaping improvement.
But if they, if they moved inside of the water conservation district?
It's true. They would, they would do a redesign of the site and, and could plant trees further into the property, south of that easement. That would be a possibility. And, and the applicant is requesting this waiver. And I think...
We can ask them more about it.
I would ask them to kind of go into their logic a bit more.
Great. Thank you.
Any additional, yeah. Just one more question if possible. I just want to go over that view shed question and build on what Chairman Brown I said. So I thought you said the lay of the land was, there was eight feet in separation between the top of the land where the closest house was and the top of the land for where this is going to be built. So if we build a 40-foot building, you're saying that will not impede their...
Their view to the west.
To the west.
Certainly not. Certainly not. Yes, their view south will, their view south will look different, for sure.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, yep.
Any additional questions for staff? With that, why don't we, oh, go ahead. Commissioner Crinns.
Just one more question regarding the easement. So the, the easement says that planting of trees is prohibited unless they get permission from the Northern Colorado Water District. I'm just curious if they had asked, if they've consulted the Northern Colorado Water to see if they would be allowed to plant trees or shrubs and just to see how they felt about covering. It says that they're not prohibited from putting a parking lot over it, but that they should consult. So I was just wondering if there's any consultation done on that.
I will defer to the applicant to answer that question.
Thanks.
Yeah, sure thing.
Additional questions? Seeing none at this time, then we'll move into the applicant presentation, please.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Andy Johnson. I'm with DAJ Design at 922A Main Street. Sorry for a little bit of a slow start. I'm a little out of practice with COVID. So it's nice to be here in person and talking to you guys. And nice to have this opportunity. Sorry we got continued at the last meeting, but we are, we're very excited to be able to share this project with you. Three of you, I believe, were present during the first presentation of this when we had a successful PUD the first time around. This is our second time. I am going to go into some details of why we are having some changes and excited to share with you the new architecture. I am joined today by Jeff Welber from Alliance, and he represents the ownership group of the project. He will be invited up to speak at the end of my presentation. Okay, so as maybe some of you remember from the last time, this is a special piece of property. It has a bit of a presence in Louisville. It also has really beautiful opportunities for view corridors towards the mountains, all of which are enticing for this property to be developed for the use that's being proposed. Sensitivity to the property and to its surrounding areas is very important. The idea with this concept has remained. The architecture, as you see in the proposed rendering on the lower part and with the sketch above, that was one of the initial concept sketches, is very well maintained with the architecture that's being proposed. This is a different product for the CTC. We've seen some new buildings come into the CTC with some other architecture other than kind of the tilt-up rectangular-shaped buildings. And it's nice to be able to introduce something that's, has a little bit maybe more architectural interest with no judgments on the use or, or what's been developed in the past. We're excited that this project has some energy to it. So as you know, the site is at one of the higher points of the CTC. It has a unique relationship to both the road, 95th/96th, and its view looking out over Louisville. The proposed design has a very similar look, has a very similar footprint, which I'll get into in a little bit. But in terms of the renderings, this is the, the general overlay of what's being proposed on that site. Going through a few of the images just to get you familiarized or re-familiarized with the project itself, you can see that the, the building is still in a kind of widened U-shaped form. Views from the road look similar, where the expression of the cantilevered building is maintained. And we're reintroduced, we're introducing a new element to the project, which was largely an interior experience before. Now we have a very nice exterior experience where the view corridor into the main entry area has a framed view of Long's Peak and of the mountain range beyond. So a little bit closer in. And then, again, looking from the east towards the overall development. Interior view looking out. So let's talk about what's changed and why. So we have an amended concept for this project. Originally, this was all 100% Class A office space. It has changed to be a mix of Class A office space and flex industrial, and that's following market trends. And Jeff will be able to talk a little bit more about that in terms of the choices of why that's being introduced to the project. That is the primary driver for a lot of the questions that were being asked of staff, and I'll be happy to answer those if I don't get into all the details that were asked earlier. So what's the result? We do have less building area, and that is a direct result of the flex industrial being introduced. Bigger volume spaces, less floor area. We are now removing much of the second floor. We are also removing entirely all the mezzanine spaces that were originally planned. So that's a big part of that floor area reduction. We do have a larger footprint. Flex industrial space takes up floor area. And we're taking advantage of an area, as Elizabeth pointed out, that allows us to kind of spread out a little bit more in a part that has that opportunity on the site. And we actually end up with a slightly lower overall average building height because the flex industrial doesn't take up as much height. The office space is maintained at the same height, but the flex industrial are feet lower than what was originally proposed, particularly because the second floor and mezzanines have been removed. Parking. We have some goals that are set up. Jeff will also talk a little bit about this in terms of market expectations around parking. We have set up expectations that there are 2.5 spaces per thousand for flex industrial, three spaces per thousand for office. And we are maintaining that voluntary access from 95th to Arthur through a land dedication that has been executed. And hopefully, we'll be able to put this onto a city work agenda to make that connection happen. We're really excited about that because this business park needs to have a little bit better access. So some site considerations. All of our site considerations are very similar to what we worked with originally. I do want to talk about some of the building stats. As Elizabeth pointed out, this building area has a reduced net gross area. The footprint does increase, and that is a direct result of the flex industrial space being introduced, where we're not going up, we're going out with some of that floor area. Our landscaped area does go a little bit lower. Our open space increases. Our hardscape stays relatively the same. Please do not get laser-locked on these numbers. Here's why. We, we were asked very specifically on our second round to be looking at our number breakdowns differently. So I don't have a like-for-like exact breakdown from what we proposed in the original PUD. We have a more detailed breakdown on our cover sheet, and probably that comparison, if you're interested, is the most interesting to look at. If you have questions on that, I'm happy to go into that. But in general, that's kind of the flavor of what's happening with this project. Our proposed parking is changing. More or less the same. It does increase. I'll go into more detail about that. And then, of course, we'll talk about the water easement. Okay, so from the original site plan, this is what it looked like. This is a color rendering of the site with the landscaping. This is the new site plan in that same location with the original footprint in red overlaid over the new building footprint, just to give you a reference point of really what, what's, what are the implications of these changes. So what's happening is, you can see in red, that's the new flex industrial space. The blue is identified as that office space. That is a two-story space. There is a partial basement for mechanical bike parking and utility access. And then we have what we're calling an amenity space, similar to the previous design. It has the flexibility to be office. However, it's, it's a common amenity for the entire complex as a gathering space, to offer food service, to offer event space, to offer additional square footage for the tenants of this project to be able to occupy. Floor plan looks like this. I know that there are a lot of lines. It's kind of hard to see exactly where everything is. But just to overlay that diagram again to identify what's what. This is the main level. The upper level looks like this. The only place that really is different is that in the flex industrial, you'll notice that we have some very small mezzanines. That has to be a third of the main level in order to qualify as a mezzanine. So it's a relatively small space. Those actually won't be built initially. They will be built based on tenant needs. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about parking. I've identified the area where we have drive aisles and parking. I have overlaid some of our detention pond area and landscaping. But in general, this is our area. You can see the two access points that meet Arthur Avenue. The breakdown table looks like this. So this is taken directly from our cover sheet. We have 205 spaces. We have a very detailed breakdown of what is included in that. I think it's really important to highlight that the first time around, we did not have an EV parking requirement. And now we're introducing almost, I don't have the total number, but we have 67 spaces that are either EV-ready, EV-install, EV-capable, which allows us to have a much better situation than what was previously proposed. The other thing that I heard mentioned is that we have removed the underground parking, and everything is surface parking. We do have ample bike parking. I am not touting that. I am not saying that that's a, an important factor other than bike parking is an important topic these days. And I think especially with the rise in popularity with... topic these days, and I think especially with the rise in popularity with e-bikes and having the accessible space to be able to park an expensive bike, an e-bike that doesn't want to be outside, it is important to have that indoor parking. And so we do want to go above and beyond to be able to accommodate that, should it be a need of the tenant. You can see that our parking spaces are meeting our goals for the project. So for the flex industrial, we're right at that 2.5 per thousand, and then we're a little over our goal at 3.2 per thousand for the office space. And I think there was a question about the breakdown of the two square footages. They are outlined right here on the chart. Talking about the land dedication, just as a reminder, the red area is the land dedicated to the new drive access. It is a write-in, write-out on 95th. However, it meets Arthur with full access. And it is wide enough for a bike lane, if that was going to be a question. Okay. I'm going to touch on this in two parts. We're going to do the first part here, and then I'll do the second part in a little bit. One of the things that is important to know about this property is it does meet county residential property. They have and are cut off by a floodplain area. So their access off of Highway 42 crosses the floodplain, South Coal Creek, and they are needing two access points for the property. Both properties have two access points. Previously, and actually currently, the Bennetts' property is accessed directly through the middle of this property. If you go there, or if you look at the aerial view and we can revisit that, you can see that drive area. It's unimproved, however, it has been there and has been used for decades. The Bennetts' need access out of their property. It provides a really good opportunity for emergency access around our building, which is important and a requirement of the fire marshal. And so using the current access point, not a new access point, from the Bennetts' property as an access easement for both the Bennetts' to use and for the fire department to use as a turnaround is a nice combined effort. That's a fully executed easement signed by the Bennetts and already filed with the county. Talking about drainage, so we do have a distributed detention system. This offers a lot of really nice opportunities for the site. As Elizabeth mentioned, it does allow us to not have to go so deep. They don't look like the detention ponds that we're used to, where you see, one, it's deep and it's usually in a corner of the lowest part. We have them distributed throughout. They are connected, and you can see the arrows of how they are connected. This is a creative solution. This is not a new solution. Pearl Izumi also used a similar design. And it allows us to have shallower basins that actually can get landscaped, where they become part of the infrastructure and kind of the ecosystem of the landscaping as opposed to separate from it. Okay, so sustainability. This is one of the things that we are really excited about with this project. We have brought onboard Group 14 Engineering as well as JCAA, who is our mechanical electrical plumbing engineers, along with my office and Howell Construction. We have been working through all the opportunities that the new code adoption, as amended by the city, provide opportunities for this project. So we are looking at the project as preparing it and designing it for 100% electrification. That's not a full commitment yet, but that is our ultimate goal, is to have that capability, if not entirely executed by the time this building goes up. One of the big opportunities, and Elizabeth pointed this out, is that we have a lot of southern access. The site is oriented that way, and the building layout was intentionally done so that we could capture as much roof area as possible for onsite renewable. So we have 66% of our roof area dedicated to onsite renewables, which, when we laid it out, and I'm going to show you those images, we have 1,156 panels using a 400-watt panel with a specific specification in size. We get to just south of 0.5 megawatts of power at our full capacity. That is a tremendous amount. And I'll tell you why, I'll show you how we were able to have that be a thing for the project. We are considering and exploring the options now, early on, of doing a LEED certification for this building, which I think would be good on many levels. Obviously, there's a marketing aspect, but I think it sets benchmarks and a process by which we can actually judge success for the building. Okay, so looking at the site, we have a lot of south-facing roof. When we look at the actual layout, a little hard to see in the overall view, but the way this building was designed is that we have these shapes of buildings with interstitial spaces. Those interstitial spaces are specifically designed for where the on-rooftop mechanical equipment go. With a heat pump system, we have a different footprint that we get to work with as opposed to the traditional rooftop equipment that we're used to seeing on roofs that we have to shield. We have these trenches that we can put the equipment in, freeing up our roof to be the canvas for our onsite renewables. Looking at a little bit better detail and revisiting the numbers of what our full capacity can be, you can see that the orientation and the capacity is quite large. Little bit better detail. And so some of the other things that we are obviously going to be considering, coupled with the onsite renewables, are a high level of envelope performance. Obviously, glazing, HVAC ventilation, and our water use, both indoor and outdoor. Okay, second part of the north part of the property discussion. Elizabeth did a very good job outlining exactly why it's difficult to do the landscaping and the trees and the buffer within this area. The kind of light red, I guess, the sort of dusty pink color is the 30-foot easement. You can see the property line in the heavy dash line, and then the Bennetts' property outlined or highlighted in the yellow. We've already talked about access and easement for fire and for the Bennetts', but I think what's important to understand is that with this property and how the topography works, we can't plant a substantial enough landscaping buffer to provide a screening of sorts for really any building, even a one-story building, given that the Bennetts' are so much higher than this property. And there's no real meaningful way to do that that is going to be allowed through this easement. Now, it is pending approval. Our civil engineer, one of the first things that he did our first time around was contact the Northern Water Conservation Easement Corporation, or whatever their formal name is. And he did have that conversation with them. Trees are an absolute nonstarter. The driveway was fine, and that was part of the discussion. And it was all based on the depth of that waterline. And so early on, we did investigations to discover where that waterline is in its depth and also where it is in that easement. Another thing to note, up in the northeast corner, there's a fairly significant air relief duct, I guess. It's a pretty significant part, and that area around that northeastern corner is also a very sensitive area where we can't have paving, where we can't have landscaping. And so it makes it really difficult to kind of do the normal landscaping that we would typically do. So when you look at what our original site plan looked like, you can see that what was approved the first time was very sparse along that north side intentionally and done so based on conversations with Northern Water District. Our new layout does look at a more distributed tree distribution throughout the site. We are offering a little bit more landscaping than what's required, and we are obviously meeting all of those requirements except for that northern part where it's difficult to provide it. Okay, with that, I'd like to invite Jeff up to finish the second part and then happy to answer any questions.
We'll take a quick 10-minute break or a reasonable 10-minute break. Thanks.
Recording in progress.
Thanks. If we can reconvene with the applicant's continued presentation, please.
Sure, I'm not too close here. Hi, my name is Jeff Welber. My address, 2585 South Gilpin Street in Denver. My company's called Alliance Investments. I have the pleasure of representing the ownership group and the development team for this project. To provide a little bit of color on kind of our original involvement in this project, we were first shown this concept in mid-2021. We're a little late to the game in terms of the previous developer having already discussed his previous concept and what he felt like was a need to reconfigure it with other developers and general contractors that were primarily larger than our company and focused almost entirely on lower-risk tilt-up type of pure industrial products that are more prominent throughout the Colorado Tech Center. In terms of our look at this and our original excitement for it, we were really, really excited just to have the opportunity to become involved with what we viewed as the potential to be the crown jewel of the Colorado Tech Center. However, based on our other projects and just exposure to the overall market in a bit of a post-COVID world, we felt like we needed to expand opportunities for use. It couldn't be entirely Class A office. We needed the project to appeal to a broader range of end users while still maintaining what we felt like was an extremely appealing architectural and design concept. Hence, our integration of the Flex Industrial component while still maintaining roughly 30% of the original Class A office square footage. And we really envisioned for this property a bit of a marriage of uses. In terms of the new progressive types of office concepts, many companies, especially in the biotech, life science, and lab spaces, are looking for a broader mix of both Flex Industrial types of spaces that could serve as lab spaces with appeal from a more conventional Class A office component as well. We also took feedback from the market in terms of better understanding that we needed to try to deliver an office product that had the potential to provide end users with more use in less space. We've attempted to try to cleverly program amenity concepts that are typical in newer and progressive office types of developments that are more atypical in Flex Industrial uses. We feel like that further has an opportunity to expand the potential for these Flex Industrial uses. We aren't specifically focusing or even attempting to market this property to heavier industrial types of uses. One thing we've talked about is a type of incubator for smaller biotech and life science firms. Our space is way too small for bigger, more established firms. We've gotten decent interest so far from the tenant rep community to that end. Flex Industrial just inherently abides by its name being Flex. It has appeal to the Perlizumis of the world in their infancy, has appeal to these smaller types of biotech and life science users. And the line between conventional office and Flex Industrial really started blurring pre-COVID and has continued to blur in terms of office demands now. I know we've talked a lot about parking component as well. In terms of what the markets told us, primarily on the broker's side, we feel like 2.5 per thousand is more than sufficient for the office component as well. These types of Flex users, to Andy's point, generally demand less than that, to where we feel we do have ample parking. And in terms of our ability to effectively market the office component, we do feel like we're at a level that's appealing to the overall market. I know we've talked about our neighbors primarily to the north as well. It's been a priority for me and our company, beginning with our involvement of the project, to maintain frequent correspondence with them and be good stewards not only to them but to the community at large. Conversations so far with the Bennetts have been a pleasure, and we really just hope to continue to maintain that communication with our neighbors and are really just excited about the potential for this project as, again, what we view as as a more visible than the rest of the Tech Center crown jewel of the community.
Great. Questions for the applicant? Anybody who would like to start? Commissioner Howe, all right?
I noticed that you have eight separate Flex Industrial sites. Can they be retrofitted into larger sites if needed?
They could. We don't currently plan on constructing the demising walls in our initial plan. We'll construct the demising walls downstream based on tenant demand.
And then my other question was, and this may be too progressive, so pardon me, but you guys have 0.5 megawatts of the solar capacity. If you guys did have vacancies, would you ever consider partnership with the city to let them reservoir some of the extra energy for their use, maybe purchase or sale of that that energy?
Certainly. And I think, you know, focus on kind of a public-private partnership is something that my company certainly has experience with, something we've talked about with Andy and will continue to be a focus as we move downstream with the project. We've mentioned our rain gardens and infiltration ponds. One thing we've talked about is a partnership with potentially CU Boulder or the Mile High Flood District to provide them an opportunity to test runoff water that, for us, is generally designed to infiltrate into the aquifer rather than draining downstream into what generally ends up being rivers.
No questions? Commissioner Graves?
This is just pure curiosity, but when you're driving down 96th Street, can you see that that glass walkway? Would that be, is that part of the visible architecture when you're coming down on 96th Street?
I hope you're asking that because you want to see it.
I think, I just thought it looked really cool. I just thought it looked really cool. So I was just wondering if that was something that you could see as you're, you know, without the connection to Arthur from 96th Street?
I'm a little sad that I don't have that rendering in this presentation, but yes, not from the south, but from the north. You can.
So when you're driving north to south and you'll you'll have a view of your building with the, okay, cool. I was just curious about that one. And thank you for explaining the the consultation that you already did with the regarding the easement.
Welcome.
So you spoke to Solar, spoke to LEED, but there's no commitments there, right? Is that accurate?
Well, as you know, you know, being early in the process and knowing that, you know, LEED starts at the very beginning of a project, it unfolds. We have our goals and we, you know, identified some of the big ones. But, you know, these are things that we do have to weigh against who actually occupies this space. These are going to be core and shell spaces. And, you know, the idea is that with the development of the project that we set the goals up for the tenant finish as well. So, you know, it's it's nothing that we can put in stone right now, but, you know, this is, these are all the right things to do. And our amended code gets us so far there already that, you know, I think the opportunities are really more not how how do we do it, but it's like, how far can we take it? So, you know, the design of the project from the very beginning has always been with this in mind. So I I feel like I feel like I just dinged around answering your questions, Stephen. I'm sorry, but.
No commitments. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah. I will say, we have achieved LEED certification for two hospitality projects that my company led development of. We understand what it takes, and to Andy's point, at least for now in the process, we need to be able to maintain appeal to the end user. In terms of our intent, it will be to achieve at minimum LEED certification. We need to continue to get that market feedback as we hopefully continue to proceed further into design.
Any additional questions for the applicant? So you are planning on connecting to natural gas? Yeah. Any additional questions, Commissioner Howe?
Maybe less of a question, more of a comment. If I remember correctly, the road that passes by to the west, I'm not sure that the right turn out would be as safe as we think, because I think that's a little bit of a blind corner as you'd look left, you'd look up and to the left. So just something to keep in mind. I think that's a nice, it's very ambitious to think that that land dedication would work, but of course, we would have to consider all that safety factor, too.
Do you mind if I talk to that for a sec? Okay. So previously, and staff can probably correct me on the date, I believe it was 2012 or 14, there was a study done. And it was initially done when RTD was looking at running a bus route through the CTC. Those plans have changed, however, the plan still remains. And so there was a consultant study done for that access point, looking at all of those considerations. And and so, you know, an intersection was ruled out almost immediately due to those concerns, actually mostly because of the the bridge, the railroad. But the road and how, the road and the hill and how they kind of all come together at that point were definitely considerations, so.
I'm sure they'd figure out with turn lanes and other things. As I said, I'm not a traffic engineer, but.
Any additional questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I just had a, if you don't mind, I just had another question, actually two, one really quick question and a longer question. One was, did you show where the EV parking spaces were and are any of them also ADA parking spaces?
Our ADA spaces are identified. I could probably zoom in on where those are, but we do have to identify those because those physically take up space that we can't move around.
Right.
However, our EV spaces were identified. However, we were, we're able to pull those out during the PUD process, and we can distribute those according to what fits best with the plan. So we were advised to actually pull them out of the PUD, have them listed, knowing that they have to go in, but where they go in exactly is is still up to us, and that'll be done during the permit process.
Okay. And then one more, is it okay if I just, I'll just jump in my next one, is we received a public comment from the landowners to the north concerned about the lack of the buffer. I'm wondering if you got to see that in the packet and if you wanted, if you could.
I did. I was made aware of this letter. I did read it. We we have had conversations with this landowner in the past, not on this topic. I think it's important to know, and this may be something that you you'll you'll see after this meeting when you drive down 95th. However, is there a, is there a pointer?
If you use the mouse, people on Zoom can see it also.
Great. Got it. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, okay, that's not working. All right. Well, anyway, looking at the site plan, if you look at the upper right corner of the site to the right of the access point that I was indicating at the Bennett's property, and actually I'll go to that layout. So where it says executed access easement, there's actually a brand-new part in there, and it's substantial. Not sure exactly where the offset is from that southern property line of that owner's property, but it effectively blocks, I would say, at least 40 feet of space, and it's also quite tall. They may have done a little bit of a favor for themselves to help block their view of the building. However, I guess my point is that without any plantings or anything, that area, I think, is very well taken care of. What was the question again, Jeff? Sorry. Or sorry, tomorrow, please.
Yeah, I was just wondering how you responded to to the, so this is not the Bennett's property. This is the property to the.
Mr. Newbold's property, correct.
Okay. And and so what you're showing me there is the screening, those green dots under where it says executed is, are shrubs?
Shrubs.
Those are shrubs. And so you disagree, you disagree that it's not adequately screened? You, that is.
We can't, we can't adequately screen it with landscaping. There's a brand-new building that goes basically right where it says executed that is quite visible from the road right now, is very prominent. And given that their property continues to go up and then down to that property, I don't think from that 400-plus-foot distance from their home that there is really any effective additional screening that can be put in place. However, if, I suppose if that owner did choose, there is that other side of the fence line to to effectively do screening, but it can't happen on our side, unfortunately.
And they said that the problem was that they didn't have water to, because they had well water, they weren't able to put trees in themselves? Would there be access to water from your side of the property line?
So those were some of the original discussions with this property owner. Here's the complicating factor. With that water easement going basically across the entire northern part of the property, we can't cross that. We can't create another easement on top of that easement. And so it limits all opportunities. And these are things that we actually were hoping to help the Bennetts out with as well. And unfortunately, it's kind of a nonstarter. So now, there, there, there's, there are a lot of things about the letter that, you know, probably aren't worth really addressing. I did try to address the parking concern that was brought up in that letter because he does own the building directly to the east, as far as I know, and there could be records of this. I I could not find a PUD within our system of land use mapping. There may be one, but I could not find what his parking ratio is for that building. But I did, I did take a little bit of time and look at some of the current projects or current, more recent projects that have been introduced to the CTC and pulled from their PUD what kind of parking ratios were introduced for those projects. And they're pretty compatible with what we're introducing with the Cannilevers project. And, you know, I think that's, that's the part of a PUD that allows us to have these discussions, as Elizabeth said, for appropriate usage based on the building type, the location, and, you know, potential occupancy. So, anyway, I wanted to directly talk about that to the building to the east. I just couldn't find the information of that building's PUD.
Final questions for the applicant? Commissioner Howe?
Regarding the emergency access, who maintains this? Is this the city, since it's a fire in conjunction with the fire department?
The owner of this property will maintain it.
All right. Great. All right. With that, then, we will move into public comment period. I'll open it up now. Thank you for the presentation. As we open up here, I'd like to have a motion to add the two emails that we've received into public comment.
So moved?
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? They have been entered. So for people who would like to speak to it, please limit yourself to three minutes and begin with stating your full name and address. I see we have three people attending by Zoom again there. Well, two people by Zoom, one by phone. Phone, I see you just raised your hand. Excellent. We will be joining you soon. And and do we have, we have a couple, two cards here? Okay, great.
The first person is Mr. Josh Cooperman, followed by Ms. Jojo Fulmer.
Great. Thank you. If we could start with Ms. Cooperman?
I'm Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. I would just like to make a few brief comments regarding the waiver about the 30-foot buffer along the north of the property. First, I'd like to say, you know, there are a lot of aspects of this development which I think are great. I mean, the architecture looks fabulous, especially for the CTC. The sustainability commitments and goals also look great. And to be honest, I think this was probably the best applicant presentation that I've ever seen, either before the Planning Commission or City Council. Even so, I don't, I still do not support the waiver regarding that 30-foot buffer. And as I explained in my letter, my main concern is about land conservation. You know, I'm not that concerned about screening, but, you know, the land in the CTC has been zoned, it's been plotted, and a lot of it has been developed. And I think it is important to conserve as much of that land as we can, given the existing zoning and plating and development. And, you know, to conserve that land, you know, the only way we can do that is to use the the codes that we have. And, you know, this waiver is basically going to obliterate that 30-foot buffer zone with with a road. Whereas, you know, it'd be nice if some of those prairie dogs could colonize there and so forth. So, yeah, that's the main reason I I object to the waiver. I'd like to see the full extent of the land conserve that we can get from our code. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Ms. Fulmer?
Hi, my name is Jojo Fulmer, and I live at 1712 Steel Street. I agree with what Josh said about the waiver and the 30 feet of land, but also just in general about the sustainability commitments. I'm really excited for those. They sound really amazing. And I just want to know more about like what is currently planned to go in with the, when it is built, because it sounds. it is built? Because it sounds like there's a bunch of goals for implementing later, like having compatibility, which are all amazing and necessary, but it'd also be really good to know, like, what percent solar approximately they're planning on putting in when they build it, or like how sustainable it will be when they build it, and what an approximate timeline would be for implementing the rest of that. But otherwise, it looks really great. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a phone number ending in 226, if we can open them up. And if you'll begin with your name and address, please.
This is Sherri Summer, 910 South, oh, sorry, this is Sherri Summer, 910 South Palisade Court. I was happily surprised to see the applicant asking for fewer parking spaces. That, that is a good move to cover less land with asphalt, although there's probably no code demanding it. It is sad to see that the underground parking has been converted to surface parking. And so with that idea in mind, I also would like to support what Josh and Jojo said about preserving the 30-foot buffer. Because it can't be the most reening and perfect buffer does not mean it should be weighed entirely. I think that really is important that we keep that protection for that small piece of land in the, in the proposal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Summer. I do not see any other public comment. People who would like to participate? So with that, then, we will invite the applicant up for a response and closing statement. I think as you come up, can you kind of re-explain that whole issue? So with the, with the Water Conservation District easement, whose property is that on?
Okay.
Oops.
I'll, I'll address your question first. The easement is directly on the Canalevers property. It does extend beyond it to neighboring properties.
Right. And so that 30 feet of open space is there, just nobody can do anything on it?
Correct.
Except for them. So, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay. We've obviously been at this a very long time. It's, we're approaching four years of, from the initial design to now. I would like to thank staff for all their patience and all the hard work that they've put forward to get us to this place. This may sound a little self-serving, and I'm not buttering their bread. They have been amazing. And, you know, it's a fun project. It's never an easy project, particularly when you have waivers or things that you have to discuss that are tricky about a property. The CTC generally is a little easier than maybe downtown properties, but this one didn't come without its own challenges. So I would like to extend my thanks to city staff for all the work. It extends to planning, fire, public works, et cetera. And we've had a lot of really great discussions. So it's been a very much a team effort. I would like to thank those who came to comment today. I appreciate all the feedback. I appreciate the kudos as well. That's also, also nice to hear. But the 30-foot easement is a tricky topic, and certainly not one that is found throughout the CTC and a difficult one to work with. So I appreciate all the, all the candor, as well as the understanding of what, what conditions were left to work with.
I have very little else to add. We did maintain conversations, like I mentioned, and have continued to with both of our northern neighbors. Unfortunately, with respect to Mr. Newbold, we were unable to deliver what he asked for on the timeline he asked for it. I just wanted to make sure that, that he and you as commissioners are aware, we're more than happy to initiate screening discussions with him specifically. That wasn't a concern that was previously brought up to us, something we've talked to and discussed with the Bennett's. And in the mold of continuing to maintain consistent communication, transparency, and be a facilitator to our neighbors, a conversation we'd be more than likely to entertain.
Thank you very much. Any additional final questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we thank you all and invite staff for a response and closing statement.
No comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin? And this is a time we do also indicate what we're intending to vote. As I mentioned last time, yes. Sure. Commissioner Moline?
I'm happy to go if, if nobody else would like to start. So anyway, this, I'm excited to see this again. I, I voted for this. We, we approved it unanimously in 2019, I believe. And I'm excited, again, to see this project. I think, I too am impressed by the architecture of it. I think it's great for us to have something like this in a more prominent part of, a more visible part of the tech center. So I really appreciate seeing something like this there that's, you know, it's just refreshing and different than what you usually see up at the, up at the tech center. So I'm, I'm excited to see this. I'm in agreement with the staff analysis of the proposal. I'm also in agreement with the staff analysis of the waivers. So I'm, I'm comfortable approving this as, as it was proposed to us, so.
Thank you very much.
And I, and I also agree the, this, the northern area is a challenge. I appreciate the comments that were brought up by neighbors, folks here in the public as well. So I, I think I'm, I'm supportive of where the applicant is on that northern boundary area right now. So.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
All right. Well, I'll definitely go next. If you look at the notes from this Canalever project, originally, I was quite skeptical about the success of this work model, though I did vote for it. And I have seen a lot of success in other areas that I've looked at just by, in Westminster and other areas. So, so I think that this, this space and this design and this work model is successful. And I really like the design, the unique design of this. So I'll just talk about the things I like and maybe the things that I, that I would like to see maybe as challenges or designate as challenges. So the design, the, the parking, I like the EV parking. I think there are some valid comments about previous commercial buildings that have been built according to the parking regulations. And I think if, we need to be careful about changing and, and accepting proposals that consistently that would undermine existing codes. So, so there's a, maybe a separate discussion that we may need to have at some point. I think in this particular setting, the parking is appropriate because of the type of use that this commercial building intends to have, though that may not apply to other commercial buildings that have either already been approved or may want to be approved in the future. So there may need to be some delineation between that moving forward, or else we'll have some inconsistencies in our codes and approvals. I like the emergency access and working with neighbors and fire departments and the collaboration. I thought that was very creative. I like the sustainability goals. I think that there can be a lot of creative solutions to energy in that manner. The land dedication, I, I'm split over. I think it would be great to have as open space, but I think it also is valuable to have a road that would connect 96 to Arthur Ave, as long as it's, has, has an efficient traffic pattern. But I think overall, I think this is a really good proposal. I would be excited to see this created and developed as I think probably a lot of the city would be.
Thank you. Commissioner Osterman?
Let's see. I, I don't have a lot more specifics to add on to the other commissioners' comments, but I just want to say that I'm also really excited about this application. I think that it makes a lot of sense to incorporate more of the flex industrial compared to entirely office space with the previous proposal. Just want to echo some of the comments that were already made. Really impressed with the sustainability considerations that were, that were factored into the design. So I think that's really exciting. I was questioning a little bit some of the waivers and whether or not they were really justified. But I think after hearing the, the justifications that were provided and, and understanding more some of the constraints that, that the applicant had to, had to deal with, I, I think that there, there is a rationale for those waivers, and so I'm supportive of those. So I think just to sum it up, I, I'm inclined to support the application. I think it's a good, a good proposal.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gaines?
Yeah, I might be a little bit more hesitant about moving forward with the waiver request not to have the 30-foot buffer that's required between residential and commercial uses. I agree with Commissioner Howe that we do need to be consistent in how we apply the code, back on the parking, I'm sorry, that we need to be consistent in how we apply our parking requirements. But I, I also agree that they've done a good job in explaining the, the rationale behind having less than the required amount of parking. And I don't think that we would, I, I don't think it would be bad for us to make this determination despite what previous determinations have been for the parking. But I, I'm slightly leaning towards sending this back to see if there are other options or any way to design it to allow for that 30-foot buffer, because it is a requirement. And we had a suggestion in one of the letter, in Mr. Cooperman's letter, that you could put trees to the south of that area. And so just simply using the 30-foot buffer as a parking space doesn't seem like it's a buffer. So there is a requirement for trees, and the trees could, I'm thinking that it would be great if it, if we could go back and have those trees, have it redesigned so the trees could go elsewhere. I know it's difficult because staff did present that this was the best place for that drive aisle to be, but the building footprint is larger. And I know we can't reduce the, probably can't reduce the parking any, any further. But I would hope there, I would wonder if we could send it back for some more creative solutions. And then just one other thing that I wanted to, that came up with city council when we evaluated a previous proposal, they wanted to see where the EV parking spaces were and didn't feel that, in, that they didn't feel that Planning Commission had done their job in evaluating without actually seeing where the EV spaces were going to be, because they had concerns about an EV space that was also an ADA space. So I would like to, I think it would be good to see where the EV spaces are, and if there's any more that can be done about the, about the, about putting the trees there. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a number of thoughts on it. Some random ones was, I, I do wish actually it was a pure office play. But seeing that the developer has gone through the trouble of redesigning it due to market conditions, I appreciate the fact that this is apparently what needed to be done to make the project work for them. It would be a tragedy to have just another tilt-up building up there looking down on town. So I think this location in particular and the architecture that's proposed does embrace that. So I'm encouraged to see that. Stepping back a little bit further from it all, too, I think we look, right, we heard 1979 is when the tech center was first created. And, and both the design and our codes envision what used to be, you know, a suburban office park, a suburban industrial, light industrial park, complete with manicured lawns of a certain size, and so very water-intensive, herbicide, pesticide-intensive landscaping. And some of these requirements, I, I hope that we are able to change some of those going forward as a city. That said, so I'm, I'm not as hung up on, on some of the details within that. As, as far as it goes for parking, yes, I'm encouraged to see. One of the big problems with parking requirements is that they've always been minimum requirements and never maximum requirements, and that the minimum requirements have usually been more than was ever needed for most places. So, so I'm okay with the, the parking waiver on that level, too. So I do find myself in favor at this time. I'm curious, do we want to discuss any more of other of these issues that maybe you, you had mentioned, Commissioner Howe, or?
I don't think I need to discuss mine further regarding your, your concerns. I guess that we could, we can consider conditions, but I think that, that the EV parking and the ADA parking would be easy for the proposal to designate if they were to go to city council and, and maybe change that in their delivery.
Well, I think so in particular, it's, it's not required at this phase, right? And so when city council spoke to that on their November 15th meeting, I think there was maybe some, we didn't, what we came up with, so when it went to city council, our job was done, they approved it, and the applicant had those spaces noted per code requirement. There really wasn't a lot of options at that point anyway, because they were just doing it to meet code. So at this point, it's not required of the applicant, and, and it's just not the time now for it, I don't think. Directors of Character, do you have something?
Right. So I believe the ordinance does not require the spaces to be shown at the time of PUD. It's triggered at building permit, and there, you know, we don't have location requirements. I, I think I'm, I think I understand that there might be some logic to wanting to know where they're located, just to make sure they're convenient. And I know there were some questions about taking away ADA spaces and how that would operate in real life if you've got an EV charging station as a handicap space, if that, you know. So there's some things to work out with that. But in any case, our ordinance, I believe, is implemented at the time of building permit rather than PUD, and that's why we were recommending that it note the number of required, but that you wouldn't have to show the location at the time of PUD.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any additional commissioner comments?
I'm sorry. I, I will agree about that with the, with the parking space. Thanks for clarifying that. I'm still concerned, I, I'm wondering if we could discuss the requirement for the 30-foot buffer. And I think it was 27 trees that were required along that, I can't remember the exact number, that were required along that northern border.
Yeah, I mean, so for my take on that is that they've described the complexity of the space. And if, the, I think the buffer originally was, was for this kind of between two different uses. In this case, the, the current residential locations are so far away, and that the 30-foot buffer, while it's not planted because of the law, the 30-foot buffer exists. It's just that they can't plant on it. So that's my take on it. I'm welcome to...
Yeah, I guess I just wouldn't consider a drive aisle that's with trucks that can, you know, that trucks using a drive aisle to be a buffer. I mean, and I, I also want to say I really appreciated all the native plants and landscaping design and that there are trees elsewhere, but I, but still, having... and that there are trees elsewhere, but I, but still having trouble with accepting that waiver.
Actually, I agree with you on that, that the drive aisle is not truly a buffer. Any other thoughts? All right, seeing none then, I would call for a motion, please.
I'll move approval of Resolution Number 15 Series 2022, a resolution recommending approval of a planned unit development amendment to allow for the construction of an 84,164-square-foot office flex industrial building with waivers, including the removal of underground parking spaces, building size increase, and redesign parking landscaping and drainage.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brownice?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz?
No.
All right, the motion carries. Good luck moving forward. Thank you all very much. Why don't we do a quick five-minute while we get set up for the next issue? Break, five-minute. Okay, if we can reconvene. Thank you all.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we can fix that in post-production. All right, I will now open the public hearing on a request for a final plat and planned unit development at 578 and 632 South Pierce. Purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before Planning Commission. Procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the Planning Commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise hand function if participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person, pooling of comments is not permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The Planning Commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I have described? Seeing no one, King, do we have proper notification, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Just wanted to confirm, we did get public notices per the municipal code. The project was published in the daily paper on November 20th, and it was posted around the required locations, and the mail notice was sent out by November 23rd.
Thank you very much. Do any Planning Commission members have any disclosures? Seeing none, I invite you to make the presentation, please.
All right, good evening. My name's Ellie Hassan, Planner Two with the City of Louisville. And the item before you is a PUD and final plat for 578 and 632 South Pierce, which the applicants have nicknamed as Project Aperture. And this is the, yeah, first time both of these are going through PUD together like this. So for a little bit of background, these properties are located on the east side of South Pierce Avenue in the CTC Industrial Park. And 578 South Pierce is this northern property over here, and 632 South Pierce is the property to the south. And the cumulative area of these two sites is 2.5 acres, and they're both zoned industrial. And just like cantilevers, the original plat was approved in 1979 as the CTC filing number one. And on the site at 578 South Pierce, there was a planned unit development and special review use that went through in 2020 for an 8,700-square-foot pet care facility, and that has since not been developed on the site. And as far as the proposal goes, for the final plat, the applicants are looking to consolidate the two existing lots into a single lot, which would be under a new plat, and these are currently lots two and three in that CTC first filing under Block Three. And one thing that is proposed as part of this plat is there is a 15-foot-wide maintenance and access easement, which grants access to the existing 22-1/2-foot drainage easement, which is on the east side of the property over here. And moving on to the final planned unit development, the application proposes a 31,222-square-foot, two-story flex industrial building that faces out onto South Pierce Avenue for its main entrance. It can be divided for up to seven tenants, and each tenant space is proposed to have a two-story mezzanine. And the end units, which are both on the north and south side over here, are proposed to have a balcony space on that second story which faces west. The building is roughly centered on the lot, and the parking areas are distributed around the building with a loading dock and truck area on the rear, as well as a trash enclosure which is across the drive aisle from that location. There are 99 parking spaces proposed and 10 bicycle parking spaces on the site, which meets the minimum ratio for flex buildings in the IDDSG. On the front of the building, there is a proposed pedestrian amenity area, which will be explained further in the slides. There's a stormlar detention pond on the northeast corner of the site as well. And these are renderings of the site, or the top drawings are rendering, the second is a drawing of the rear elevation. And on the top of the rendering, this is showing the front side of the building as well as the side on the south, and this is showing it from South Pierce Avenue. And the building materials will primarily be metal panels and stucco, and there is larger glazing areas on the front facade with accents of composite wood on those inner walls of the second-story balcony, kind of cantilevered area. So the entryways for each of these tenant spaces is accented by anodized aluminum storefronts, and they have fascia canopies over those entrances. The north and south tenant spaces have that metal panel-lined cantilever on the second story, which creates interest and separates it out from the contrast, in contrast to the stucco on the first story. The site in the rear elevations do contain glazing as well, but it's primarily on the second story. And you can see this both over here on the rendering as well as the rear elevation. And the colors of the building materials are mostly neutral shades of gray, ranging from a darker gray on the metal to a lighter gray on the stucco. And there's a little bit of wood accenting on that balcony space. And this creates a color palette that is comparable with some of the newer buildings that we have seen in the surrounding areas of the CTC. And based on the proposal, staff does find that the application is compliant with the final plat criteria, as well as the PUD criteria, which is laid out in the municipal code. The project is compliant with the IDDSG with waivers, which are discussed in the coming slides. The project is also compatible with the comprehensive plan and specifically the CTC Special District framework within that plan. So moving on to the waivers, there are three total waivers, one for Section 5.2, which is discussed here, and two for another section of the IDDSG, which is explained in the next slide. So the first waiver is from Section 5.2.8, which, of the IDDSG, which requires perimeter landscaping to have a ratio of one tree per 30 linear feet on the property lines. The applicants are requesting a waiver to allow two trees on the north perimeter and seven trees on the south perimeter, where 10 trees are required on this side and nine trees are required on this side. The north perimeter also, the north perimeter contains a drainage pond as well as existing asphalt from a shared access driveway that's on the site to the north. And because of this, the applicants are instead proposing 27 trees on the east side of the property, where 14 trees are normally required. This brings the total perimeter tree count on the north, south, and east perimeter up to 36 trees total, where 33 are required per the code. And zooming in a little closer on the southern property line, there's an existing easement, which is shown in blue over here, and that has limited the tree planting locations for the applicant. So instead of proposing full trees, they are proposing 16 mountain mahogany shrubs, which are going to be located in these green boxes here in the gaps between the tree plantings. And staff supports this because the northern property line, or the northern landscaping is, or the landscaping is provided elsewhere on the site, and we find that this does still provide accurate screening, especially considering the size of the shrubs at maturity. And because of that, we are hoping that we support it because the screening helps with the property in areas where it is able to be provided. The second waiver is for the, is for Section 5.4.D. And the first part of this is a minimum 10-foot-wide planting area, which is, which has to be adjacent to 50% of the building frontage. And the second part of the section that they're requesting a waiver from is the fact that this planting area has to contain one tree per every 30 linear feet of planting area, per the code. So instead, this, the applicant is proposing a perimeter area along 60%, roughly 60% of the building frontage, and that area's width ranges from 3.2 feet over here, up to eight feet closer to the tenant finishes, and is 6.2 on this northern side and 4.1 on the southern side. And the applicant, and then the other portion of the waiver for the, since there are just shrubs proposed in this area, they are proposing four trees over on the front of the building rather than having that one tree per 30 linear feet requirement fulfilled. And per the applicant's waiver request letter, they did mention that their geotechnical report showed that the project should limit planting against the building due to expansive soils, which staff has supported in the past for similar projects. And the trees on the south and west sides of the building would also be subject to reflective heat from the building, which would cause heat stress. So in lieu of this, they are still planting some shrubs along the entire building perimeter where there is landscaping. And the shrub planting area contains 107 shrubs and rock mulch. And of those shrubs and the rock mulch, they are exceeding the requirement of one shrub or 25 square feet of mulch, which is required further in the code. And the staff finds that the shrubs are more appropriate for the hotter sides of the building, since the heat reflectivity was considered a problem from the applicant's letter. And this combined with the fact that there are some relocated trees that are still proposed close to the building perimeter, makes it that staff are still supportive of the waiver from the applicant for these two sections of Section 5.4.D. And based on this information, staff are recommending approval of Resolution 17 Series 2022, which recommends approval of the final plat and PUD for lots two and three in Block Three of CTC filing one. And that does conclude staff presentation, unless there are any questions. And we did just want to let you know that we did receive a public comment letter after the packet was published, and that was provided to you guys on the dais. I believe from the previous time that was already entered into the public record. And I, and then also the applicants and their team are available as well.
Great, thank you. Commissioner, questions of staff?
Can you show where the EV parking? Is that shown on this one?
Oh, yeah, so they do comply with the EV parking. I would have to bring up the PUD to show it further, but their numbers do, let me actually bring that up. That's probably an easier way to display that for you. So in their parking table, they do meet the minimum requirements for EV parking based on the number of spots they are provided, and that's in the site data table over here. And they do have approximate locations.
Sorry, we're not seeing the site data table.
Oh, I'm so sorry, let me log in. Let me log in out of that. I forget that when it's on full screen, it doesn't show the other portions. Sorry about that. Here's the site data table that, is this mouse visible for? Okay. So, yeah, this is the required, the total number of required parking spaces is 99, and then they have the listed, provided EVs, installed, ready, and capable spaces. And those are listed further. In this case, the applicants did show the proposed locations for each of those, and they are labeled here to correspond with the code over here.
Good, thank you. Additional questions? Regarding ADA spaces, so it seems like the proposed spaces here kind of both share a smaller no-parking strip. Do you know anything about what's required? Do we have any van-accessible requirements for ADA parking?
There are none that I'm familiar with at this time with that. But we could definitely look into that for you.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation. Invite the applicant up.
Good evening, Commissioners, city staff. My name is Vahe Christianian. I live at 918 White Hawk Ranch Drive in Boulder. I would also like to really start thanking the city staff for all their support. It's been about a, this has been a project about a year in the making, and it's predicated with our current existing business and a little bit of background about how this project has come about. My family has owned a local Boulder business called Mike's Camera for many years. I started Recycled Photo, which is a current Colorado Technology Park business, which is currently right adjacent to this property. And we've currently outgrown our space pretty dramatically. And what's most interesting about the park is, the park has drawn kind of a new innovative business or type of business that is centered around the reuse, recycling, upscaling, upcycling of equipment. There's a current business in the park called Pro's Closet. There's another business called Wildwood Guitars. They do similar things in very other different vertical markets. We, through Recycled Photo, have actually grown to be the largest reseller of used photographic equipment in Colorado, out of a 2,000-square-foot facility adjacent to this property. When these two properties became available, we decided to acquire, hence the PUD application of combining these two lots. Our hope is to occupy about 6,000 to 7,000 square feet of this facility for the relocation of Recycled Photo and have about 24,000, 25,000 square feet of leasable space, at least initially, with the intent to ultimately grow a little bit more into the space. And with city feedback, with our architect's feedback, and just general Boulder County changes, we are also hoping to really design a very kind of elegant, high-tech type of a building in a, in the older section of town, which is, again, as you are fully aware, fully kind of, the current existing tilt-up kind of project is not something we're necessarily proud of. This is our home, this is our community. We are hoping to kind of have a little bit of a nicer appeal in architecture and in design. And our architect is here to answer any other questions as well. But we intend to have this building to be a green, efficient, kind of a higher-end, higher-tech type of a building. And, and we plan on occupying the furthest northern section initially to move into. So that's kind of the game plan. The subtle little items that we were hoping, the landscaping has been a little bit of an issue. There's a small easement to the north of the property that was agreed upon between the 5, the 632 property and the property further to the north. And that kind of, because of that easement in the concrete, it prevents us to put additional landscape to the north side, which is a little bit of a, of a blind area anyway. So we've kind of, we've redistributed the landscaping all throughout. And we do intend to have this really heavily landscaped. We do want this to be a green, green environment. Ironically, just as a point of reference, the property to the south currently that we reside on, where literally do, right, right to the right of it as you're standing, looking, looking east, has five trees, literally in the whole property. The property to the north of us has 29 trees. I think our current total tree count for this property is 69 trees total, or something like that. So we were, we wanted to make sure we were bringing forth the exemplification of the code. At the same time, we really didn't want a forest compared to the other kind of sections. So it was kind of a little bit of a balancing act between the parking spots, the EV requirements, the commitment to providing ample parking space, and ultimately also providing the kind of space that would allow us to bring forth the kind of tenants that complement our business. So we are kind of leery of hard manufacturing. That's really not the intent. We want to bring forth the kinds of either internet-based businesses or research or medical research types of businesses. Hence the flex space that could be either relegated to seven total spaces or potentially Recycled Photo and one other tenant. So we're trying to build as much of a flex environment as possible. Sorry. I'll take questions if you guys have any.
All right, we can open it up to questions. Anybody? Commissioner Krantz?
So the, the net, though you are reducing some of the planting areas at the perimeter of the building, you're compensating for that by adding additional trees? Is there, what is the net difference?
The net, I think by code is we're three under the total requirement. Three trees under. I'm sorry, or is it six trees?
Oh, for the, for the building perimeter, it's about 11 trees under because there are four proposed specifically in, in lieu from what your landscape plan was showing.
Okay. So I think we show currently 69 total trees, and maybe by code, we're supposed to be at 70. A little over that.
I appreciate trying to compensate for places where you're not able to put trees by putting more in other places. I was just wondering about the, the long line of trees that you showed in the landscaping plan. Is that, I'm not an architect or landscape designer. I'm just wondering if that is ideal to way of placing the trees and how you came up with that, rather than breaking it up? Are they all the same species?
Right now, they are. We were thinking about possibly altering some color in terms of foliage. But we actually thought it to be somewhat attractive to kind of show, because we're trying to mimic as much of a modern kind of a feel to it. So we thought, rather than kind of random kind of lines of trees in the back. By the way, the backside is not going to be very visible. It's more of really kind of tastefully making a little bit of a differentiation between where we are and the adjacent properties. We did have conversations with the people, with the neighbors to the north, south, and east about what we're doing, and they seemed to be very excited about the project and looking forward to it. I think ultimately, whether it's a, it's a straight line to the east or possibly some altering of those trees, I think we're obviously very flexible with that. We just, we thought it might be kind of attractive to have kind of a straight.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you for helping me. I, I didn't realize it was a more modern type of look.
There's no questions of the applicant? Commissioner Howe?
Could you go into more detail about the sustainability? You kind of touched on it in your presentation. Go into more detail about that?
The sustainability of the project itself?
Of the building?
Of the building.
Thank you. My name is Mark Ford with the Ford Studio, 2425 Canyon Boulevard in Boulder. So we are looking at implementing solar PV for this property. So the, the project will essentially get outfitted for future PV. That's going to be based also on what future tenants may request or what the building owner is looking to invest in that type of system or those type of systems to attract the type of tenants that they're looking for. And then as the site plan shows, we are providing the EV stations throughout the property. In terms of the energy code, we're actually exceeding the energy requirements stipulated in the IECC 2021 code. So at the moment, those are the sustainability options that we're looking at.
How much are you exceeding it by?
Excuse me?
Yeah, how much are you exceeding IECC 2021?
I don't have those documents with me. We're pulling together those documents with our energy reader. So we have minimum standards to meet that's required by the code. We are exceeding that somewhere in the neighborhood of about 10%. So we're about 10% more efficient than what's required by code. And that's without the solar PV requirement. So we're looking to implement the solar PV, which would take us to another level above what is required by code.
But no commitments?
Well, the commitment is I currently have 42 solar panels in my residence. I mean, that's kind of the environmental commitment I've personally made. It's, it's the kind of building we want to be proud of, and we want it to be green. From the perspective of commitments, I think it's, from a business side, it, it makes it kind of difficult to commit to exactly what we want to put on the ceilings based on the kind of potential prospective tenant. We will definitely push for that kind of a, an applicant and that kind of a tenant. We also want it to be, I mean, by nature, the business is a very green, sustainable business. So we want to kind of try to exemplify that as much as we can through the project. We called it the Aperture Project, kind of as a, as a pun with, with the business itself. But we also use it as kind of an opening into a new light, a new world, kind of a new way of doing business. So we, we, we mean to stand by that, so.
Any additional questions of the applicant? No, seeing none? All right. Thank you for the presentation. We'll open up public comment now. And as we do that, we could have a motion. Actually, we do want to add the one email as it pertains to this project into public comment for this project.
So a motion to add the email to the public comment?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion carries, thank you. Again, please limit yourself to three minutes and begin with stating your full name and address. I see we do have two people still with us on Zoom. And do we have one, one card here?
We have one in person, Mr. Josh Cooperman.
We can invite you up, Mr. Cooperman.
Josh Cooperman, I live at 216 Griffith Street. Again, I'd like to briefly comment about mostly one of the waivers, but a little bit of a second waiver that's been requested for this development application. And again, my concerns are the same as previously. I would really like to see us conserve as much land as possible in the CTC and use our codes to do that. So my main concern is with the waiver that asks us to waive the 10-foot beds or landscaping around the edges of the building. I'm pretty sure that if we add up the smaller beds that have been proposed, they won't make up the same amount of land as the 50% at 10 feet would. And, you know, so I, you know, I really appreciate the efforts that the owner and has gone to, to, you know, to accommodate more trees in certain areas. And, you know, like, so those waivers seem totally fine to me. But I, I still, I'm not, not convinced by the waiver for the 10-foot planting beds adjacent to the building. So I don't, you know, I'm no expert, but, you know, do we really need to have two-way drive aisles? I don't know. Or why wasn't the building footprint just reduced a little bit to be, to allow for those, you know, planting beds, which are technically required by our code? I don't know. So that's my primary concern. And, you know, if there's any room for some kind of concession and to compensate for that waiver, that would be great. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody on Zoom raising their hands at all. So I will now close the public hearing. And the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin? I could do it. I usually defer to you all, though, so. Okay. All right. Commissioner Krantz?
I'll be glad to start.
We'll just work our way across the dais here.
Yeah, I'm, I find myself generally in favor of this application, but I, I just, given, you know, our recent, the recent discussion in our city council on Tuesday about our commitment to sustainability, I don't want to see any reduction in the green space. But I'm thinking that through some conditions, we could find a way to have the applicant compensate for those, the deficit of, I think we said 10 trees. I don't, I'll have to ask staff again what it was, or for that green space that we would lose by not having that 10-foot planting buffer, either through green roof, through using grasscrete to cover some of the parking areas. I just do think that we don't want to, you know, I do think it's important that we uphold our rules regarding the landscaping requirements. So if we could do, I wonder if we could add some conditions to make it amenable to everybody in that way.
Commissioner Mullin?
Thanks. I too find myself generally supportive of this. I, I guess, I'm thinking what I'm hearing is we're, I believe, I guess staff can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but we're not discussing the fact that, that there's a deficit of overall open space on this property designated, you know, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, let's clarify that because I think there is some confusion. And so Ellie, chime in and give more specifics.
Thank you.
So we do have, you know, open space coverage requirements. They do comply with that. Around the perimeter of the building, they don't meet the tree requirement. But for the whole site, if you were just to take a gross number of trees required, they're exceeding the requirement for number of trees, and they're meeting the requirement for landscape coverage. They're just putting the trees in different locations than the design standards would typically require.
Yeah, that's, that was my impression, too. Thank you. So I'm, I guess, when I look at a site like this and, and I see this site in the tech center, one of the things that is an emphasis area for me is making the area pleasant for the, for pedestrians. And so we're going to be getting a sidewalk here, and we've got some landscaping that looks good for that section. And when I, again, using the images in the packets, I think that to me is kind of, that's my central focus for what I, one of the focus areas I'd like to see in the landscaping plan for this, and I think this plan meets that. I appreciated hearing from the applicant that the north and south exposures, again, if you look at the information in our packet, you're, you're butting up against side yards on adjacent kind of industrial properties. I, I'm, I appreciate what they're doing with the landscaping there, and, and I'm comfortable with where they are with that. In terms of trying to get more around the building, I, sure, that would be great. I'm, I wouldn't mind seeing that. I'm not, that is not kind of a deal breaker for me. And I do recall- And I do recall that when applicants have mentioned that soil swelling considerations close to the foundation of the building are a concern, I do seem to recall that we've granted waivers in those kinds of situations. So, I'm supportive of this, appreciate the design that you have here. And, yeah, I don't know if I made myself totally clear on some of the waivers and landscaping, but I'm generally comfortable with that, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Osterman.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any concerns with the application, so I'm inclined to approve, to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, I like the design of this. I think, I like the building materials, though some have told me I have bad taste on those. But I think in this case, I really do believe this is nice building materials. And I appreciate the applicant's effort to, as I read it, the number of trees are adequate as a whole. So, it seems like, though deficient in some areas where they were required, have made a really valiant effort to place additional trees in other areas, too. I guess the requirement for the minimum planting area width, there's a 10-foot adjacent. It seems like we're trying to play with those numbers a little bit, which was a little bit confusing to me. It seems like we're trying to meet that, though we fall short of it. It seems like we could try to finagle a little bit more open space or more trees here and there. But I think overall, this project will add value to the existing vacant land. So, I think as a whole, the project is valuable.
Great, thank you. One thing, an idea that came up to me last time on the last application, too, has to do with density. And when we look at sustainability, trying to do more with less. So, when we have land that is not high-quality habitat, then squeezing more use out of it is, at times, is a trade-off. It's a dynamic trade-off between too much and just kind of wasted space. There's also a difference between high-quality habitat, low-quality habitat, and no-quality habitat. The 10-foot line around the building was, I think, designed for this kind of suburban look and feel. And, I mean, it's not even good for squirrels, in my opinion, probably. You know, you just, I mean, if you've hung out in an office building, looked out the window, probably, if you're lucky, you get to see birds, right, in the trees. So, at that point, I am comfortable with waiving that 10-foot requirement around the building itself, allowing it to be thinner in places. So, I find myself in favor of the application. And barring any additional comments or questions?
If I could, I was just going to respond just a little bit to your comments, because I agree. I think one of the things I generally do like about some landscaping at the building is a little less on its habitat, but more on its ability to kind of break up the building and having that closer to the building. So, I just wanted to share that with the people. So, I appreciate that we sometimes see that in areas. In this case, I agree with you, though, that I'm not opposed to the waiver that's being requested, so, thanks.
And I think at that point, too, right, the actual linear feet is more than required, even though it's less. So, I think when you speak to that visual, which is important, and open space, even if it is turf grass, has value to humans and their experience in these areas. So, it's not that it's all bad. Another issue that I want to discuss, just for us future to think about, too, we don't have any rules as it relates to landscaping and fire resistance. So, it is something to, hopefully, the city will take on in the not-too-distant future, looking at those requirements. So, with that, any other additional thoughts, questions?
I thought it was great that this, that the developers went above and beyond for the energy. I think that was really valuable. And hopefully, we can continue that with more proposals in the future.
10% would be very significant if it happens. Any additional thoughts?
I mean, I don't know if, I'm just wondering if it would be possible, just so I understand that we're all looking at the same thing. Because I'm just looking at, we, some of us are saying that there's a net, the same amount of trees is required. And I was looking at the chart on page six of the PUD, and I just wanted to make sure that I was indeed understanding it wrong, that there were the same amount, there were the same number of trees as required, they were just in different places. So, I would like to be corrected, but I'm just looking if it's possible for us to look at that table on page six just one more time really quickly to see the total number of trees, if anybody wouldn't mind doing that.
It's questionable, but because we've closed public comment period. But Rob already spoke to it once.
Do you want us to bring it up on the?
I was just, I just want to make a point for clarification. I mean, it's information that we already had. But I'm seeing, I don't know if I might be adding it wrong, but when I'm looking at the perimeter landscaping, I'm seeing a plus eight, and then I see a plus 13, and then I see a deficit of two, and then I'm just trying to add them all up. And I was just wondering if I was adding them up correctly.
Sure, so, from the way I, and again, I could be wrong as well, but on the frontage, they're meeting the tree number, so they have 20 on the frontage side. That isn't requesting waivers or anything like that. So, they have the amount required there. On that north perimeter, there is that deficit of eight, so they are only proposing two trees. On the east side, they're including 13 more than is required. So, there's 14 required, they have 27. And then, on the south side, they have seven, they have nine required, and they're providing seven trees, so there's a deficit of two on that side. So, total, there's, oh, but then they also have the four trees for the building perimeter, which would bring them to? Yeah. And then they have the seven parking lot trees. Yeah, so there's a deficit of 11 plus the third. Yeah, I think you are correct. Per the numbers that they are providing here, they would be at the net amount that's required.
So, deficit of? And actually, we can reopen public hearing and ask the applicant up to speak to this. I'm actually, thank you. I'll ask you to come up to the microphone, so we can hear that on the record.
I believe, per the calculations, between the required number and what was actually provided per plan, we were at a minus six in the total number of trees. And that's why I actually, we really tried to squeeze in as many trees as possible in this project. It's not like we're, we want to skimp on trees. The element of, the reason I also wanted to bring that comparison between the adjacent lots, I thought would be kind of important as well. But per the submittal, I believe we were short six trees.
Thank you. Does that match your counts?
I get 14 when I add up the deficit that Ellie just went through. But regardless, I was, I just didn't, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify for our discussion purposes, that there was indeed a deficit, and it wasn't even, and so, that's why I was proposing it. And I, I don't know why, but based on the differences between what's required and what is shown in this chart, I'm seeing 14.
Got it, I think they're working on some recalculations over here.
I just wanted to clarify that for that. I'm not sure if it's something we want to make some, if it's something we want to make any conditions upon, but.
Well, in that discussion, we'll find out a reconfirmed number here. What do other commissioners think about making it as a condition? Now, part of the issue, too, is when trees get too dense, then you have to water them.
Right.
So, it may be a look that we're after. It may not be water-wise, but what are your thoughts, Commissioner Molyneux?
Yeah, I think that's kind of where I'm going. And I hear the comments about the challenges of fitting more in on this property. Obviously, you could make a smaller building and a smaller parking lot, and then you could fit more trees. I'm not, at this point, ready to recommend something like that. So, I think with the given hard surfaces on the site, I think I could be comfortable with their proposed landscaping plan.
All right. Any other thoughts, Commissioner Osterman, did you?
I would have to agree with that. It appears to me that the applicant has made an effort to try to incorporate as many trees as possible in the design. So, I'm comfortable with the deficit.
All right, Commissioner Howe, any thoughts?
I'm trying to work out a percentage rather than a number. I would guess we're, I guess I haven't come to that number yet, but seems like a smaller percentage than I thought it would be. Maybe, I can figure that out in just a second.
All right, sure. Do we have any updated calcs from staff on this tree conundrum?
Five required.
Commissioner Grant?
Yeah, just in the meantime, I'm looking at the design, and I don't, I also agree that I don't see a place that, you know, they could add more, more to the existing landscaping, more, the greens, the places that are potentially green are green. And I do understand what Commissioner Molyneux is saying about the water use, but they have proposed mountain mahogany in some of these places, which is a low-water-use shrub, and is a great native plant for wildlife if there is sparse wildlife that traverses the CTC. So, the only thing that I could think of to compensate for that would be to adding, would be adding, like I said, grasscrete or green roofs over some of the parking, on the parking or over the parking, unless anybody had any other ideas for a condition to compensate for the landscaping deficit that I think there is, but we're still working on the calculations.
Right, so I, if you want to, I mean, we did a quick calculation. We're showing a deficit of eight. We've got numbers all over the place. If you want to wait five minutes and maybe take a recess, we'll do a very precise calculation, if this is important, to have a very precise number. So, there is a deficit. I don't know if it's six or eight or what it is. If you want to take a recess, we'll have all the staff calculate it and come up with the absolute number.
All right, we'll take a very short recess. Thank you, appreciate that.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
So there's a deficit, deficit of six, once that is corrected. I do want to note, because there's some discussion about landscape coverage also, and so I, I don't, I mean, I guess you could, if you, if there is a deficit of trees, maybe you can logically say that maybe you need some more landscape coverage, but I do want to note that the minimum required under the IDDSG is 25% of the lot. In this case, that's 27,518 square feet. They're actually proposing 31.3% landscape coverage, which is 34,490 square feet. So they are exceeding the total landscape coverage. They're just, they just have a deficit of trees, if that is relevant.
Yeah, definitely.
To the commission.
If you can speak to quantity versus quality, right, a tree is not necessarily, a tree is a tree is a tree, right? Different trees are, offer different things to us. I think my concern would be that we could drop down to smaller, lesser trees.
So typically, the purpose of the trees in site design like this, there's lots of different purposes for the trees. It's not necessarily stated in the code, but in my mind, you have, oftentimes, you have trees that are meant for shade, and those are typically found along pedestrian areas and within parking lots, and then you often have trees that are meant to provide buffering, visual buffering between lots. So I think if, when you look at the trees, I'd recommend maybe thinking about if the visual buffering or shading is being provided adequately as intended by the code. And then, as far as, I know impervious area and landscape area can be really important as well, and so, you know, they, they are exceeding the standard for impervious perverse, pervious landscape area.
Great. Thank you very much. I think that's helpful.
That is tremendously helpful, and I now understand the landscaping design better and am supportive of the way it is.
Great. With that, any additional thoughts, comments?
Would it be appropriate to put those building materials into the public record?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to do so.
Thank you. Can I get a second? We're entering the material boards into the public record. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Any additional questions, deliberation? Well, no, questions are kind of long gone, but deliberations, seeing none, would request a motion.
I would make a motion for approval of Resolution Number 17, Series 2022, recommending approval of a planned unit development to allow construction of a 31,220-square-foot flex industrial building and a final subdivision plant to consolidate lots two and three, block three of the CTC filing one subdivision, to create one lot.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Chair Brownies?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck moving forward. Thank you all very much for your time. Now we'll move into planning commission comments. Does anybody have anything pressing they want to share? 'Tis the season. I hope everybody has a great one.
I would just say that as energy becomes more valuable and trees and open space, you know, we're looking at a lot of different things, more so than, than maybe the guides, guidelines and codes can even go into detail with. So it's good to get, it's good to have that discussion. I appreciate everyone's comments on that. Keeping in mind what the energy, you know, where you are deficient in one, you can be, have benefits in another. So sometimes that's good to see the value of discussion.
Yes. Wholeheartedly agree. Trade-offs, dynamic tension. Anybody else?
On a completely unrelated topic, I was interested in whether or not we could, on how we get our emails, comments, and was wondering if anybody else would be open to the idea of us just having planning commission letters from the public automatically forwarded to us as they come in from, as, as they come into the planning commission mailbox, so that we can read them as they come in.
I was hoping to discuss that with you in advance. Personally, I don't want to have every email pop into my email box and get lost. For me, it's important to have them all combined together. So, and, and we would end up restricting public comment to that point, because we'd have to have a cutoff time. Currently, we don't have a cutoff time, so we'd have to put it out probably the Wednesday before, or maybe even the Tuesday before, to allow staff time to, to do that in advance of the meeting, to get them all out.
Can you just have them still consolidate all the comments for us in the second, but just get them?
I just wondered, some, just, I don't think we're going to have any more issues like this, but in the past, we had a couple of problems with, for me, you know, we're going to read public comments. So I was just wondering if any of the citizens would be able to get them.
Commissioner Krantz, I don't think you're talking into the microphone, or it's turned off.
Oh, sorry. I was, I was just wondering if anybody else was interested in receiving them in real time. I know that when I get emails from city council, that when I send it, when I've sent emails to city coun, council in the past, they send back, you know, immediately a response saying, "We've, thank you for your email, it'll be included in the public record," you know? And so I just was, wondered to the public to have a way to know, "Oh, we've got your email, we care about it," and, and for me personally, to be able to read it sooner rather than later.
Does city council receive these in real time?
So it's a mix for city council. So city council ha, so there's the city council email, and they all have city email accounts, so it's linked.
But their personal, personal work.
They're not getting it to their personal emails like you all would have to, at least now, because you don't get assigned to city. So that's kind of a logistical issue. So city council will get those immediately, but they do get collated into the packet. So if staff or the city clerk or somebody else gets a city council email comment, we do not forward those to city council in real time. And so those get collated together and go out with the packet or supplements to the packet. So that is not the practice of the city with city council. It's a mix for them, if that makes sense.
Because they have their own quasi-private email addresses.
Yeah, they have, they have a city email address, just like staff. But again, like, I think to answer the question directly, let me restate it. They get some directly when it goes to that particular address.
Right.
Sometimes they don't get the emails directly, they just get them in the packet if they aren't going specifically to that email address.
Right. Yeah. So if it's addressed to city council at, then they'll get it in the packet with everything else.
They'll get it directly and in the packet, but if it's addressed to a staff member, we don't forward it on to them ahead of time, we just put it in the packet.
Would, can I ask a quick question? Would it be, I guess, I guess, is there a concern that some people would get them for, like, somebody would send some to one per, one of the commissioners, but not others? I mean, is, would that become an issue?
Well, that, that becomes an issue, and city, city council knows that when they go individually to their address, they forward it on to the city clerk or staff, so it does get collated. So we'd have to create a process for that, if we were going to do that. I, you know, I do think it's, it's, you know, we want to make, and I want to add a couple things, too, that if you, and I, you know, I know it could be hard on some cases when there's really a lot of comments, and we want to make sure the commission absolutely has ample time to read emails. So when there are a lot coming in, I would recommend, if you can, you can always come early, and we'll put them on the dais. If you don't have time, you can take a recess and read the emails and make sure you can absolutely, I mean, you should be reading all the emails. So take a recess, if there's thirty emails on the dais. We try not to do that. I mean, if the, if we're getting a lot of emails, we try to send you supplements throughout the week to get ahead of it, but it, so typically, there shouldn't be more than, let's say, five to ten at the most on the dais. If you don't have time, I would recommend asking for a recess and then reading the emails to make sure you can read them and understand them. Certainly, you can go as far as having a continuance of the case, if you really need ample time to read a lot of emails, but we try to get ahead of that. I know there was one meeting where we had a little bit of a snafu, and we did have to give you something like thirty emails at the dais, and we apologize for that, but certainly, you know, hopefully that doesn't happen again.
I, I don't know. Would you, would the city look at any kind of equity issue as well? Like, I mean, I guess, in terms of, could it be hard for everybody to get an email, whereas if they're all bundled and attached to a website, that's maybe more, I don't know, if there was a consideration there?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, like Commissioner Krantz was saying, you could do both, and then, but I would say from a staff standpoint, I would be concerned, you know, administering the department, it could be a lot of extra work to send those individually. I think it's much more efficient for us to kind of collect them and then try to send them in, with the packet or in supplements, rather than, you know, having to track and individually send them, and then, you know, we're not always monitoring our email or maybe taking vacations and things, and there could be concerns about missing a day or two and them not coming in real time.
Um, Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, and not to make a mountain out of a molehill, but you, another thought process of how to solve that problem would be to create a pool of emails at the level of the planning, your, your, your planning board, and then commissioners could patch into that throughout the course of the week, rather than disseminate them to the commissioners. They could, "Oh, I've read that one. Oh, no, I got to read this one, that one," and then you could distribute them as a bulk as well. Just a thought, and as a reverse engineering.
I'm, I'm concerned that it's a demand on staff time, at a time when we don't have a lot of spare staff time, and that it's trying to solve a problem that doesn't usually exist. So I do appreciate, we have a workaround, though, that if we needed to take a recess to read through the emails, we could do that. It would be strange to open a meeting, start it, and take a recess right away, but we could do that. I'm open to that, certainly.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for considering it. I would just, I just had, just twice, I had a problem getting the emails read, especially that last one with the gas station. I was feeling that I was, rather than listening to everybody talk, I was trying to, like, follow a link that was in an email. It was a little bit difficult. But what about the, just, could we do an auto-response to let people know that we've received their emails? Or is that, or does nobody really care about auto-responses anyway? I just, just to know, when you, when you send an email, people don't know, don't have any response back until they see it in the packet. Is that adequate for everybody?
For me, that's okay.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know what other people think, though. Please. So it's, so it's one email account, it's the planning at, and...
Right, yeah. So again, some of the emails will come in, so like, we'll advertise a case, we have the current cases, and we'll actually list the case manager, and so sometimes those emails go to the case manager listed for the case. Sometimes they go to the planning@lewisvilleco.gov, some, you know, so sometimes they'll go to me, just because they know me, even though I'm not the case manager, right? So there's kind of a mix. So I understand, I think it's good, probably good etiquette to, just to let people know. I think we get busy and don't respond, we just like slide it into the file for later, and I, I think what I'm hearing is that it would probably be nice and good etiquette to respond as much as we can, just to let people know their, you know, their comments have been heard.
What I'm concerned there, though, so right, the way you describe it, it could be three different people.
Oh, it absolutely, it absolutely will be.
Five different people, and two of them could be.
It would be easy if it was just the planning commission, because you could probably program an auto-response.
Right.
But we're not going to capture, so I just want the commission to know that we could do auto-response for the planning commission, but not every email that goes to the planning commission is a public comment, but we could just say, "Hey, we received your email," auto-response, but our, our individual emails might be a little different.
It might be confusing then, though, if you sent it to an individual staff member and you didn't get the auto-reply.
You'd, you'd, well, yeah, you'd probably start wondering if it came through. And I don't know that we've had, I mean, certainly, I think if we've had, yeah, I think it's good etiquette if we have the time, you know, in a perfect world, I think, so we could certainly consider that from the staff level. I, and certainly, if we have issues with emails not going through, I know there was concern with that, because when we had Redtail Ridge, for example, there was such a massive amount of emails, sometimes, I think we included them all. I'm not aware that we didn't actually, in fact, we probably over-included it, because sometimes people will email to four different email addresses, and when we're getting hundreds of emails, we probably can't take the time to scrub them, so sometimes an email would go in four times, because it went to the city council and the planning commission and our individual email addresses, so it would get in multiple times. So that's not, you know, there's no perfect, there's no perfect way to do it, you know, that we're aware of, but we can try to, you know, try to have better email etiquette, I guess I would say.
I didn't mean to make a mountain out of a molehill, but I just thought, I just, I just popped in my head, because I loved it when, when I'd send an email to city council, and Ashley and Caleb tend to respond right away, saying, "Thank you for your email, we'll put it in the record, and, you know, thanks for your feedback," and I just, I don't know how they have the time to do that, but it was nice. But I, I, I'm fine to drop this.
You, you could volunteer to.
I could volunteer to answer all the emails. I would be willing to.
Speaking of which, we should probably give a note of thanks to Mayor Stolzmann for her participation and work within the city for this past period of time. And per their November 15th meeting, I think we're all happy to know that you value our comments, and it was something they had mentioned, just on the fact that if we happen to see it. So, thank you, Mayor Stolzmann. Any, any other comments? Hearing none, any other staff comments?
Nothing else for this evening.
All right.
Yeah, we have, we have the future agenda item listed, but unless you have any questions.
Fences. Okay. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Have a good evening.
Recording stopped.